We will call to order the February 4th meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education. Please rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hill, roll call, please.
Mr. Callahan? Mrs. Chudkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez? Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Ms. Hill, will you summarize executive session, please?
The board discussed matters falling under returning client privilege and personnel, including but not limited to agenda items.
Okay, any correspondence of note?
No.
Okey doke. Okay, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
No move.
Second.
That was Mr. Smith, and I'm sorry, the second was Mrs. Napolitano. Okay, Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. And now the part that we all wait for, our lovely student council representatives. Morgan, what do you have for us tonight?
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Kuntz, SWMHS Student Council Board of Education Representative. I would like to begin with clubs and activities. More than a dozen members of the Leo Club attended a statewide day of learning during the MD-16 Leo Leadership Conference, which was held in Sayerville. They participated in a variety of leadership sessions, including public speaking, mental health, member engagement and motivation, event planning, and working in teams. Last Tuesday, eighth grade students and their parents attended the annual freshman tip-off orientation. The evening began with the Student Council-sponsored Activities Fair, where students and their parents met representatives from the high school clubs, sports, and activities. At 7:00 PM, the students and parents split up so that the students could attend the Division Championship Boys High School Basketball Game, while their parents and guardians attended an orientation in the auditorium. Mrs. Sikola, Director of School Counseling, the curriculum supervisors, and high school administrators acquainted them with an orientation of the high school, including the scheduling process, the course offerings, graduation requirements, programs, academies, and more. On Thursday, the high school counselors will be visiting all eighth grade social studies classes to share the same information with the students. Congratulations to SWMHS Senior Rishi Shaw, who was honored with the Lifetime Presidential Achievement Award, signed by former President Joe Biden and presented by Sayerville Mayor Kennedy O'Brien in recognition of over 4,000 community service hours, where he supported over 672 small businesses with marketing and growth resources. Beyond supporting small businesses, his service expanded to advocating for sustainability, tutoring students, supporting mental health awareness, providing youth mentorship to help those in need, and more since the start of the pandemic. Today, the high school counselors conducted college and career planning presentations to all students in Grade 11. Students were given the tools to jumpstart their career planning for life after high school. Tomorrow evening, the counseling department will provide a similar presentation to the parents and guardians of the juniors. Tomorrow, the high school counselors will begin their Semester Two Freshmen Foundation's presentations, providing the ninth grade students with helpful high school tips as well as Navion's Career Interest Survey. This is lesson one of three that the counselors will conduct in the elective classes. Scheduling for the 2025-2026 year is in full swing. The window for students to enter their elective choices closes this Friday, and all AP course applications are due tomorrow. The high school counselors will be conducting scheduled planning presentations at the middle school on Thursday. JROTC students will join the counselors to promote their program. Moving on to sports. The girls indoor track and field team won their ninth consecutive Greater Middlesex Conference Championship this past weekend. Individually, Zayla Khan won the gold medal in the shot put. Leila Stevenson won the silver medal in the 400 meter, while Jada Roke, Loyce Anning, Leila Stevenson, and Genali Ven won the silver medal in the 4x400 meter relay. Lastly, Maralake Akinrafaan won the bronze medal in the shot put, as did Angelia Lapri in the mile. On the boys team, Will Lewis won the gold medal in the pole vault. The wrestling team. Casper Trezgiak and Bryce Bouchard won first place in the GMC Wrestling Tournament, while Mike Zahn took second place. The wrestling team also defeated Colonia and Highland Park High Schools to improve their season record to 13-7. Congratulations to the boys basketball team for winning the Greater Middlesex Conference White Division Championship after defeating East Brunswick High School. Later in the week, they dominated Princeton High School to improve their record on the season to 16-2. The girls basketball team also had a very successful week, which was evident in their three wins over John F. Kennedy, De Nellen, and Timothy Christian High Schools. Their record is now 8-13 for the season. The girls bowling team beat South River High School in the first round of the Greater Middlesex Conference Tournament. The competition cheer team won first place in the Varsity Game Day Division and second place in the Varsity All-Music Mega Division during the David Brerly High School Cheer Competition. Congratulations to the girls swim team, replacing fifth out of 18 teams at the Greater Middlesex Championship Meet. This is their best finish in over a decade. We also congratulate freshman Emma Smith for her fifth-place finish in the 200 Freestyle and eighth-place finish in the 500 Freestyle. Senior Caroline Astorita also medaled in the 200 Freestyle, placing eighth overall. Congratulations to the boys swim team for placing sixth out of 17 teams at the Greater Middlesex Championship, which is also their best finish in over a decade. We also congratulate Joshua Jatune, Brody Canaan, Sebastian Velez, and Michael Wazenko for breaking the school record in the 200 and 400 Freestyle relay. Junior Michael Wazenko also placed second in the 200 Freestyle and third in the 100 Backstroke, breaking his own school records again. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Morgan. Great job, as always.
We have questions. So, Morg, did you swim in the GMCs?
Yes.
How did you do?
Uh, all right. It's, so top eight medal, and I placed ninth.
Oh.
Oh.
Next year. Now, what about the relay team that you're on? How'd you guys do?
We, I think we came in fourth in the relay that I was in.
That's fantastic.
But in top three medal.
Oh.
It's cruel. How is it that it's, uh, the top eight in one category and then it's the top three in another category?
Top three for relays.
Um, how about the Army? Did you, did you go to the Army to do any of the indoor track events, or no?
Uh-uh, I don't do winter track, I do spring.
Just do spring, okay, great.
Yep.
Excellent report. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah. Phenomenal. A lot of great student athletes putting in a lot of time, hard work and dedication, along with their coaches.
And I do have to say, the final one of ours went to the freshman orientation thing at the high school the other day. Mrs. Sikola, Glue, and his entire team there did a fantastic job. There were so many clubs and athletic teams there, well represented, and it was really nicely done.
It's amazing, yeah. They do a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of people, I was there for swim. We got a lot of people to sign up.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? No? Okay, Alana? It's all yours.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Alana Saragneese, Sayerville Middle School Student Council Board of Education Representative. Here is what is going on at Sayerville Middle School. Student council members will be attending a leadership conference on Thursday at the Ocean Place in Long Branch. They are currently selling carnations during lunch for Valentine's Day. Flowers will be distributed on Valentine's Day. The PTO hosted the Sayerville Middle School Tricky Try and Handbag Bingo on Friday, January 31st. Everyone had a great evening. The Odyssey of the Mind currently has three teams preparing for the regional round of competition in February. Now on to Sayerville Middle School Athletics. The Bombers Blue Girls Team has improved their record to 10-1 after defeating Monwell, Piscataway, South Brunswick, South Plainfield within the last week. Coach Vasquez is extremely proud of their efforts and the hard work they have put in all season long. The middle school cheerleading team is preparing for the NJCCIA State Championships while attending basketball games to support our athletes. They are hosting a craft night at the Bomber Beyond Cafe on Thursday, February 13th at 6:00 PM. The Sayerville Middle School cheerleading teams, along with the SWMHS cheerleading teams, will be hosting a showcase before states on February 19th at 7:00 PM in the SWMHS main gym. We will also be celebrating our eighth grade cheerleaders that evening. All are invited to attend. The cheerleaders are currently selling T-shirts to celebrate the 20th season. Please see an athlete if interested. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the students at Sayerville Middle School.
Great job, Elena. So, Elena, you're gonna be at the craft night.
Yeah, I am.
I'm gonna go, so if I go, you're gonna say hi to me, or are you gonna pretend you don't know me?
I'll say hi to you.
And I'm also going to-
She's gonna pretend she doesn't know you.
I'm, well, Mrs. Bloom always pretends she doesn't know me. Um, but I'm also gonna try to get to the showcase, too. I'm looking forward to both.
Okay.
Very cool. Great job, honey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I have no comments at this time. Mr. Smith, any comments at this time?
Nothing at this time.
No, okey dokey. Moving on. Dr. Labby, presentations?
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. We are going to continue reviewing the 2025-2026 proposed budget. We have two special presentations this evening. Curriculum and instruction and special education, along with another special presentation by our Bombers Beyond 18-21-year-old program. So, because some of the people in that program had to get up early so they can open the cafe at 8:00 AM, we're going to allow Mr. Naster, Mr. Vanderbeck, and Mrs. Fazzini to go first with their respective presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Labby, and we are in the coffee business, so we do start early. So, on behalf of our special education supervisors, we have Dr. Dafina, Mrs. DeChico, and Mr. Vanderbeck, our special education parent advisory group, our special education teachers, child study team members, related service providers, and paraprofessionals, who, by the way, are the backbone of our department. We do thank this board for allowing us a few minutes tonight to share with you some highlights from the current school year, as well as our goals and the corresponding budgetary implications for those goals. But, as Dr. Labby did just mention, we are going to do something different tonight. I'm going to keep my presentation brief. You'll see it's just two slides, unlike in years past when Dr. Aglies would have to hook me, because we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Vanderbeck and Mrs. Fazzini, who will share with you a comprehensive and exhaustive cost-benefit analysis, or as we call in the, the, the small business business, a profit and loss sheet. The, the actual three-year analysis that this board, for the program that this board charged us with building out, if you remember going back to the 2018-19 school year. We think there's a lot of value in you seeing the fruits of our collective labor and your unwavering support from the very beginning, again, in the 2018-19 school year, up until the present day. So, beginning with highlights. The first three bullets really represent what we consider to be supplemental services beyond the students with disabilities typical special education programming. So, this board has supported our Camp Excel program in conjunction with Mrs. Grossman and Mrs. Burns. We did service 550 students last summer. We also provide this year supplemental instruction. That's one-to-one instruction for our students who need that. I've said in the past, I can't think of a better intervention for any child than one-to-one time with, with our teachers. We also provide, are providing, Special Education Literacy and Math Academies, which are small group instruction. Again, that's beyond the regular school day, either before or after school. We purchased, trained our teachers, and are implementing an alternative literacy program. I mentioned the Sunde system in, in past board meetings, as well as in past committee meetings. Essentially, it's a program for students who are not responding or did not respond to the district's universal reading program. So, we're up and running with that program. We are in the process of doing the same thing at the middle school, and you'll hear more to come on that. We also, Dr. DeChico, worked with our New Jersey CARE, our longtime board-certified behavior analytic partners, to implement a program called Central Reach in our multiple disabilities classrooms. We're piloting it this year. Feedback has been very good, so we do expect to expand that into, um, into the remaining multiple disabilities classes next year. We increased our Bombers Beyond enrollment. If you recall, in year one, we had five students. We increased it to nine students the following year. We are currently at 12, and we do anticipate going up to 15 next year, which is really the comfort level that we thought we would, we would have when we built out the program. We, Mr. Vanderbeck, I should say. He created several special education cooperative education placements for our 12th grade students who need some life skills training and preparation for post-high school life. We know that, or we recognize that our students with disabilities might need a little help finding the co-op placements, unlike the, the general education student. So, Mr. Vanderbeck has partnered with our very own Chris Makely in the Technology Department, who, who has given an opportunity to one of our students. Mr. Vanderbeck has partnered with Mr. Preston at Orleth and also Mr. Gluhusky at the high school to, to, to provide experiences for our students. I'm not gonna say too much on this next bullet. We, in, in a moment of serendipity, which, by the way, is my favorite romantic comedy movie, we had a chance to... Too much? It really is. We, we had a chance to expand our Bombers Beyond program to another unit at 132 Main Street. We recognize that not all of our students would be interested in food services, so we are now in the retail business, and you'll hear more about that very soon. This board supported the purchase of a passenger van this year for our program. This allows us to expand our job placements for students who might not like food service or the new retail business. It also allows us to take our kids out through the community to additional recreation experiences and just to, to, to learn to utilize the community and the neighboring townships. It also, on the backend, returns one of the, the buses that we had on loan to the transportation pool, and it eliminates the need for overtime. So, we do thank this board for their support, for this very important purchase that we just made this year. Finally. Bombers Beyond Cafe, if you recall, going back to the January reorganization meeting, our superintendent almost spilled the beans. I was going to nudge him under the table, but he'd probably take me down. But we did, were awarded the Central Jersey Choice Awards Best Local Coffee Shop this year. And the value of this award is that it really happened organically. We've learned that a lot of coffee shops campaigned for votes. They advertised for votes with paid advertisements. We did none of that. We didn't even know that people were voting. They just did, and of course, we were awarded it. This comes on the heels of the Innovation and Special Education Award that the New Jersey School Boards gave us last year, which Mrs. Bloom shepherded through for us. So, we appreciate the recognition. And... If we move over to our department goals, which are also district goals this year, and they are also multi-year goals. Again, I won't say much about the first goal, but we are well on, on, on the way to opening the Bombers Beyond apparel. The Community Hub portion is open, as you'll hear soon, and the apparel store is soon to be opened. We implemented the alternative literacy program that I just mentioned at the elementary level, so we are up and running with that program. We're going, in the process of doing the same thing for the middle school. We're awaiting a shipment of materials. We'll do our first round of training at the June Staff Development Day. We'll train again in September, and then we'll be up and running for the fall of next year. And finally, this last bullet, or last goal, is a bit of a heavy lift for us. We were charged with exploring and identifying an alternative math program. Unlike alternative literacy programs, in which there are an abundance of programs out there, we learned that there's really no market for alternative math programs. We looked at four or five programs. They were not standalone programs. But we just recently found a program called Math 180, which we think shows real promise as a standalone core program for our pull-out replacement special education math classrooms in grades four through eight. I'm awaiting confirmation from our math experts, Dr. Maharana and Mr. Toy. We're going to get the, the materials into the hands of some teachers as a pilot, and we should be, um, we should accomplish this goal by June of 2025. And finally, our budgetary request. There isn't really anything new here this year, unlike previous years. We do ask this board to support, continue to support our extended school year. You'll find those salaries in the, um, the, the summer salary section of, of the, the district's budget. We ask you to continue to support our one-to-one and small group academies. You'll find those listed in one of the 20 accounts within the special services budget. 20 account denotes the use of federal funds, and, and we do use federal, federal funds for both of those programs. We ask you to continue to support wages for our Bombers Beyond colleagues. You'll see that I emphasized in the presentation slide the word colleagues, because unlike other districts who have their 18-21-year-old students volunteering for the work experience, our students are actually paid. So, they are colleagues, they are employees, just like we are. They have the same human resources portal, same paycheck stub that we get, and we think that really makes us stand, stand out from, from anybody else who's doing something similar. And again, you'll hear more about that soon. And finally, we ask you to continue to support wages for our cooperative education placements at the high school. Dr. Maharana, our math supervisor, she traditionally budgets for two placements for us, and then in the special services lineup, you'll see two more requests for funding for two additional students. This allows our child study team members the chance to be really creative as they prep kids for post-high school life. So, before I turn it over to our team and take the risk of making my presentation pale in comparison to what you're about to see, does anybody have any questions on anything here?
With the coffee shops, so once they age out of the program, like 22-years-old, they're aged out of the program, uh, you know, is it where we're developing relationships with local coffee shops to let them know, here's a program where we're developing skills for these students, for these young adults, and try to transition them into a job that they can maintain?
So, so not necessarily coffee shops, but we are developing relationships with other businesses, some restaurants, and you're going to hear they have some incredible relationships with people. We are close to placing several kids in jobs who either recently graduated or about to graduate. So, that is the goal, though. We want our kids to be able to work.
And to extend that, I had the privilege, for the second year in a row, sitting in on a meeting they had, talking about the students that were going to be aging out or graduating from the program, and brainstorming about, okay, these are their social skills, these are their academic skills, these are their vocational skills. Where do we feel they're a good fit in the community to work? And how can we get an, you know, an inroad into getting them to work there? And some of them have already been placed in places where they believe that they'll be most successful once they come out of the program. So, a great deal of planning, thought, and collaboration goes into working these students toward a vocation once they leave the school district.
And I think you'll hear from Mrs. Fazzini, she may mention Ken's Crew, which is a partnership we're forming, and also Radon Valley Community College, which is another partnership we're forming for our kids.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
No, and I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that you finally found, because, yeah, math was always a part of the special education program that there wasn't an alternative kind of program for. We did great in literacy, so it's, I'm really looking forward to what this Math 180 might be for you.
We are, too, Mr. Smith. We have quite a few online programs that we utilize, software programs, but we know our teachers need, and our students, they need something in their hands, too. So, we need old-fashioned manuals, student workbooks with the online component.
Yeah, so this will be like a traditional math curriculum pro, you know, full encompassing program like you would put in any classroom.
Correct. It's marketed as a core program or an intervention program. So, it will fit both of our needs.
Great.
I just wanna make a comment about the success that you've had, winning, you know, the Bomber Beyond Cafe, winning the People's Choice Award, and then also getting the award from the state. You also, you may not know this, and, but people in the public, living in Sayerville and outside of Sayerville, know Sayerville for our special education program, and believe it or not, people actually move and wanna move to Sayerville for those special needs that we provide to their children. So, you're really doing a great job, and I'm very proud to be a part of this board that has, you know, voted for all of these things, and will continue to vote for them.
Thank you, Mr. Pabon. Mrs. Pabon, we, we do appreciate your support. I'm also responsible for central registration, so I do see those parents who come in and share with us their excitement to hear what we have.
Yes.
We have virtually anything that a child needs, we have right here in town, and that's because of the support of this board.
Yeah, but you, also because of your great staff and all your plans for the future. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Labby.
I have a question. I was, I don't know a lot about Sunday's system. If this is something that they can learn how to read, right? With, um, because I was reading about it, that is with a multisensory approach. Can you explain it a little bit more for me?
It is. It has its roots in, in a concept called Orton-Gillingham, which is one of the more respected approaches to reading development. So, so it's designed as an intervention program. So, all of our students have a chance to, to work within the district's universal reading program. Kids who are not responding need something different. So, this is designed for that. It, it is multisensory. It is multisensory. There's touching, I know, there's the sand trays and things like that within the Orton-Gillingham concept. There's motor memory and things like that. But it's really a systemic and sustained approach to reading. Okay, great. Anything else? All right, so at the risk of, of going on a little bit too long, I can't just turn it over to Mr. Vanderbeck and Mrs. Fazzini without recognizing and letting you know that they are the OGs of the program. They have been there since minute one, day one. When we came to them with this crazy concept that we were gonna be a school district who was opening a business to the public, they trusted us. And they waited from September to February for us to actually get this thing up and running. And I think it paid off, because from that moment on, they have taken it, along with Mrs. Garnett, who is also here, Mrs. Falcone, who is not here, Mrs. Backo. They have taken this to the next level. They are the heart and soul of this program. Of course, Mrs. Fazzini and her family knows everybody in town. But they are the heart and soul of this program. Any success we have really should go to that team right there. So, I'm happy to turn it over to them, and we're really, really proud of you guys. We're not off to a good start.
You gotta use your microphone.
Oh, gotta use the mic.
Is it on?
I guess, right?
Yeah, there.
So, uh, thank you, and welcome for giving us this opportunity to talk about our program and the three-year overview of, of the Bombers Beyond Cafe. You can go to the next slide, if you don't mind. This is gonna be a quick overview of the timeline that we had. I do want to take a quick moment to thank my team, Christine Falcone, Cynthia Backo, Alyssa Garnett, and Kaylee Fazzini, because without them, this program wouldn't be anything. It really is a team effort. It is a dream team. Ninety-two dream team has nothing on us. We, we went through, we started in May, May 2022 with just this idea coming from you guys that we were gonna launch this cafe. And I remember Kaylee and I went into the interviews, and it was a, it was a political office with holes in the walls, wires hanging down. And we looked at each other, and we were like, let's do this. We're gonna, we're gonna figure this out. And so, this takes us through the timeline. It took us November. High school, we launched us off opening at one of the PD days. By February, we were open. Took us about nine months. We got our first night event, and we're gonna get into, we're really big on getting our students into the community. Our second location was opened, or signed, at least we signed in 2024. And then finally, we got our Merkantow license for the bomber shop, which we'll talk about more today. Um, I do wanna address one quick thing, because a lot of this is gonna be the face of our, our program, is the cafe. But it's not about the cafe. Half of our program is about the community and building these partnerships in the community. And they really are the ones that are, help us get to where we are. We always have a saying at the Bombers Cafe that's like, you know, we needed the, we needed the community to build our, and to start our cafe. But we didn't realize how much the community actually needed us also. And so, they've embraced us and helped us get to where we are because of what they do. So, um, Kaylee, do you want to?
Thank you for letting me share today. So, we just wanna start and thank Ms. Bloom for nominating or helping us get the ball rolling on our Innovations Award, because it brought attention to our program at the state level. But it also allowed us to kind of share how wonderful our group is and how wonderful our acronyms are. And, um, you know, that's a big testament to everybody here for allowing us to kind of bloom and grow. Moving on, we did receive the best local coffee shop. That was very exciting to us. We received no- We received notification that we could, um, promote that, and we put it out on our social media. We did not bomber blast it, we did not, um, you know, ask for the newspapers to write about us. We just let the community tell people how much they love us, and they really, really did. Um, so we found out in, when did we find out that we won? October? November? We found out in, in November that we won, and it was just celebrated since then, and we just got our plaque, and it's hung up at the cafe if you want to come see it. Um, and then in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, we received a, in a, what do you call that? A community outreach monetary value from, from DuPont. Um, they chose us because they wanted to highlight a community, uh, business or something that would be positive for our community, and they donated money to us. And we used that money and gave back to our program, and we added a smoothie machine, which has been very popular, um, and we anticipate it being more popular in the summer months. And we also got, what else did we add?
The coffee machine.
Uh, we got a backup coffee machine in case ours ever breaks. We now can keep functioning, um, right on schedule. So we were very grateful to have that from our community partner.
So we're gonna take a minute to walk through the, the P and L chart, the actual profit and loss of the program. So, uh, as we go through, I'll just go through each of the things. There's a very extensive, uh, Excel sheet that goes behind this that this is all tied to. But for the revenue, uh, the first year, this is the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year, um, the first revenue that we had, we had two added district students that we received about forty-five thousand dollars in tuition for, and then seventeen thousand dollars in revenue sales. Uh, that's where our revenue came from. The expenses were that we had to build a coffee shop. Uh, we had to build it from the bottom up, renovations, everything, but this also includes utilities, the works, everything that's incorporated, teacher salaries, everything that's involved in, in getting it. So our, our expenses were quite extensive the first year, they were about five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, so our net income obviously was quite a bit. Now, the added district cost that we avoided is the important one, because when we were able to bring this program back home, uh, because we wanted to bring our students into our community, we were able to, to take the, we, we, we looked at the added, um, that off, off-site placements and what it would cost for each student to be placed out of district. And it ranges from sixty to a hundred twenty thousand dollars. So we went with a cost of about seventy thousand dollars per student, and then another ten thousand for transportation. So we, we, we came up to with a number of about eighty thousand dollars per student that we were avoiding for added district. We had three students that were out of district, which came to two hundred forty thousand for that first, first year. So we had two out of, uh, district tuition students and three, three students that we, we brought the first year, which were five students. So the first year, we, we took a hit of a, or it cost us about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. So I'm gonna, that's the nuts and bolts. I, I'm gonna let the heart talk about the rest of the fun stuff here, so.
Uh, so I'll just talk about the accomplishments of what we did in the first year, uh, with just the basic of opening up the cafe. Like Andrew said, when we came in to do our final interview, they brought us to the cafe and said, here, vision, just, just picture it. And there were wires hanging from the ceiling, there was blue carpet on the ground, and we're looking at each other like, huh, are you sure this is gonna open? I don't, I don't know if this is gonna work.
Mrs. Fazini, we also had Jimmy Combsberger saying, no, we can't do everything?
Mm-hmm.
And then Kenny Sodowsky saying, yes, I'll get it done.
And he has continued, and that whole maintenance department have continued to work with us, and they come over in a second's notice to help us if anything's broken. Um, and really, the cafe turned into a cafe with the heart and soul of our maintenance department, um, and we are so grateful that they put so much time and attention into it for us, and it's beautiful. People come in and they're, they say what a warm spot it is and how welcoming, and like Andrew said, the community needed it just like we needed it for our kids. Um, we have regulars that come three or four times a week and stay from nine till twelve. Sometimes we have to kind of push them out with the broom. Um, but the, the positive of it, not, not so much that they come every day and they're buying stuff from our cafe, but they talk to our kids and they, I shouldn't call them kids, our crew members, they talk to our crew members, they know them by name, they know their interests, and when I tell you, when we go to ShopRite on Wednesdays, which is usually our ShopRite day, it's like we're all the mayor of town. They come and running up to us, oh, the brew crew's at ShopRite, oh, I can't wait to talk to them, find out what they're cooking today. And it's just from them talking to our customers on a daily basis. Um, so it is a warm and exciting place, and it, that started our first year there. Um, we also built a ramp so that it's accessible to anyone who needs to come in the door. Um, we redid the cafe floors, they are not blue carpet, they are beautiful wood floors, they're, they're gorgeous. Um, we have security cameras all over the place, because it is a business, and it's right on Main Street, it's not hidden somewhere, it's right in the middle of town. Um, we do have a wonderful security guard that is with us, and it's his birthday today, so we are very grateful that he's with us all the time. Um, and then that first year, we did open in February, and our sales have been truly incredible. Um, Andrew's gonna talk about that in a minute.
Yeah, just real quick, it, it wasn't complicated, and a lot of expenses went into this, as you guys might know, but, um, we also had, we, we had to go up and we had to not only follow like borough code, but we also had to follow school code. So there was a lot of hoops that we had to follow, there's a lot of code that we had to follow, we had to make sure everything was up to, to par and stuff for safety and all the obligations that we wanted to follow as a school, so when it came to that first year. And seventeen thousand dollars for selling two-dollar fifty, a two-dollar muffin and a two-dollar fifty coffee is, it's, it's a lot of sales, so, um, can we go to the next slide? Oh, you're on it, thank you. Uh, the next year, uh, obviously the numbers improved drastically, uh, we didn't have to redo everything in the, in the place. So our revenue, we have two added district placements, again, that was about fifty-one thousand dollars per student. Uh, our sales jumped substantially, uh, to over forty thousand dollars worth of sales uh, the next year. And then, uh, so our, our, our expenses go up because we expanded our staff. We went from two parents and two teachers and then added a supervisor into that, so we had some additional costs with that. Um, but our added districts avoided costs, we had seven students that we were able to avoid sending out of placement. So we were able to save five hundred sixty thousand dollars by not sending them out of, out of district, not only that, but keeping them in their own community. So we weren't sending them to Addison or Somerset or wherever other location they might be. They were home, getting educated in their own location. Um, again, this is the heart, so.
I'm, I'm excited to talk about this part. Um, so we hosted a Grinch night, um, which took place at our cafe, and the several PD decided they were going to lend us one of their officers who dressed as the Grinch, and he did a fantastic job playing the part, and the place was packed. Um, there was not room to move. People were there to take a picture with the Grinch, um, to try our coffee, and they had no idea that their coffee was gonna be paid for by, um, Dr. Labby that night. And they had no idea, they were just coming in to see what our place was all about, because our hours, you know, they're, they're during the workday, so not many people can always stop by to visit. So we opened at nighttime and allowed our community to come out and see what we're all about, and we were packed. And one of our regulars who was there said, ma'am, we gotta make this space bigger. And I think that night, I think you guys called right away and said, hey, we gotta knock this wall down. Um, and they did, they did it over spring break, we knocked the wall down and added some more floor and some furniture, and now we have a much larger space for all our regulars that come and stay all day. Um, and it's, it's homey, and we have a little fireplace in the corner, um, and it, it's really just a wonderful thing, but we did expand the cafe space to add more love in there. Um, I do want to, to say that we did participate in fourteen night events. We host a variety of different events at the cafe. Um, this year, we've already had, what, six?
Six.
Six events. Um, we host, what we're very proud of is an open mic night, um, and anyone from the community can come and sing and perform, and a lot of our crew members actually take the mic that night. Um, we have some that do jokes, and we have a, a young man that sings with his father. Um, and just recently, we had one of our students, uh, she knows all the words to Journey, uh, Don't Stop Leaving, and she sang the entire song in front of all the people that we have at the cafe. Um, like Alana had said before, they're hosting a fundraiser for the SMS cheerleaders, they are running it, and we are just the host, and we're just excited to get more people out to see our space. Um, and then the last thing I want to point on this slide is the six thousand nine hundred and ninety-six transactions. That, the monetary value doesn't do much for us, it's the amount of transactions that our crew members have had with people. When we first started, it was very difficult to have our crew members hold a conversation and ask what they were doing the rest of the day. And through these transactions, they now hold conversations, they remember our customers' names, um, they interact with everybody who walks through the door, and they've made some friends through it. So that's what we're really excited for in year two.
Yeah, and real quick on that six thousand nine hundred, just to give you an idea that, um, if they weren't in our program, they would have been placed in a classroom somewhere, and those six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven transactions were real life in the public, in the community, in a job, transactions that they got to experience a real-life job. Not only that, but behind the scenes of that is the setup of the coffee shop, the making of the coffee, the, the cashier, the preparing of the muffin, the preparing of everything else that goes into it. So that number is probably tripled by real-life, real-life job experiences that they've gotten, that instead of a classroom that they're doing a worksheet, they're getting these job experiences that they need. So, super important. And this is our final year for this year. Some of this is forecasted because we aren't completed through this year, so we couldn't give it a full comprehensive look at it, but, um, our revenue this year up to this year is forty-four thousand. We don't have any, uh, added district students anymore, we are all in district. So all twelve students are in district students, uh, so we are avoiding the cost of nine hundred sixty thousand dollars of sending those students out of district, uh, which gives us a net benefit. This is with buying a van for the, the passenger van for this year, for all the other costs that we've talked about, uh, we're about a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, in the green. So it's a, it's a net positive for the program. Um, and we have gone through plenty of other things that I'll let Kaylee highlight right now, but there's a lot of different programs that we've discussed.
I'm gonna get to the, the store and the community hub at the end, um, but I do want to talk about our community partners, because I know you brought up, you know, what's next after they graduate. Um, we are very proud that our district welcomes our students back into their schools. So one of our students is working to train as a para professional, um, at Wilson Elementary School. He has been there all year, he has been working very hard, and soon he'll be independent, um, working with the students in a kindergarten classroom. He is, he has grown so much, um, we're very proud of him in that he has kind of taken his fears of being a leader, and he's worked on it with our para professional, Ms. Baco, and he's almost ready to be independent, which would then benefit our Wilson School, because now they have an additional para, um, that they can work with and, you know, protect our kids. So we're really proud. Um, we also have another student who is training to be a bus aide. His dream is to be a bus driver, so we started small and, and he's working towards his dreams, um, but he is a bus aide in our district with the preschoolers, and he knows them all by name, he knows every route in Sayoville, um, and he is doing a fantastic job of just doing his job and working towards his dream. Um, another student recently just started at Truman Elementary School in the library, he is an avid reader, he loves to write stories, uh, so Mr. Bellamy welcomed him into his library, and he works with the students checking out books, he puts books back, sorry, books back on the shelf, um, and he's interacting with the elementary school, schoolers at Truman. So those three are staying in, um, as, for now, and we're hoping that they can continue in a safe place like our schools, uh, that will look after them. But we do have partners all over. So we work at Bubba's Thirty-Three, uh, which is right across the street, and we help them with their setup routine every Monday. Tuesday, we do a mobile delivery to the schools. Wednesday, we work at the Sayoville Public Library, um, we set up their stay-in-place, so we get it ready for parents, grandparents to play with their kids at the Sayoville Public Library. Um, Thursday, we actually work at the Venetian, it's in South Amboy, it's a resident nursing home, um, and we are in charge of their recreation. So we come and we hang out with the residents of the Venetian, uh, and just bring smiles and, you know, something different to their day. And then Friday, we kind of have up in the air, so every week we do something different. Um, we'll tour different places, we'll go to the mall to see different stores that they might be able to work at, um, and we keep Fridays open. So the purchase of the van is definitely going to help us to get our students, or our crew members, out to jobs throughout the day. Right now, we have to wait till nine-thirty, so we're missing out on other coffee shops, we're missing out on, you know, maybe if one wants to work in the bank or at Walmart, they're missing those shifts that they'll be able to do, and now we can get them out bright and early. So that's our plan for the passenger van. Um, you want to add anything? Oh, so our apparel shop next door, we recently got apparel from the golf team, lacrosse, and field hockey, as well as several junior bombers have donated some bows and socks and, uh, some shorts that, you know, you can purchase. And we also have the community hub in the back of the building, and we actually utilized it today for the first time. So Leading Edge, which is, has been just such a wonderful partner with us, they, uh, are utilizing the space to have their meeting, and they utilized our crew members to serve them coffee, pastries, snacks, and we kind of used it as like a waiter service, and we went next door and prepared their orders and delivered it, and again, it was just more interactions with people in the public. So it went, it went really well today.
Mrs. Fazini, would you just, if you don't mind, would you mention the attempt to work with Radon Valley Community College and Ken's Crew?
Yes. So we are reaching out to, um, different programs that are after, for after our crew members leave us, and we have reached out to Radon Valley Community College, they have an incredible program, what's the name of it? Do you remember? Achievement Center, thank you. The Achievement Center. Um, and they provide real college classes to students with varying abilities. Um, so they have talked to us several times, we've toured their campus several times, they offer programs such as art, dance, music, um, writing classes, creative writing classes, business classes, communication classes, um, and they are interested in some of our students attending. Uh, so we have been working to figure out transportation there and working with DVRS to make sure that, you know, something could be helpful and provide them opportunity to go there.
And just for our board members, just for context, the feedback we got from our parents whose children are working at the cafe is, we never thought we'd see our child working and getting paid to work. Well, now we want to give them the same opportunity with college, we never thought our child would be able to attend and take a class at college. So Mrs. Fazini and her team are, are very close to doing that. Think about the mom or dad or guardian who can say, my child is working and taking a class, which they never thought would happen.
So I actually, um, worked with a colleague at the high school who founded a program at Middlesex that's starting in the spring, um, and they provide classes three days a week for three or four weeks on various, very different, um, subjects. So there's a culinary school, which one of our students really showed interest in, um, and it's right down the street at Middlesex, so we're looking at that option, too.
They'll make it happen.
Yeah, probably, but we're gonna work hard. Um, and then Ken's Crew is one of the last ones. You have more knowledge, if you mind talking.
Yeah, no problem. Ken, Ken's Crew is just a, um, it's a off-site, it was a, it's a, a guy, a team that works together, and they have an intake, and what they do is, he generally teams up with Home Depot, his biggest partner, and, uh, he is onsite mentor to our, our, our workers. And they go, he goes for eight weeks with them onsite, uh, so if you go through your intake, you qualify for the program, there's an onsite job mentor that goes onsite for about eight weeks to get them ready for the job. And then they basically pass through the promotional process, and then they get a job, and then they get a full-time job with that, with that company. So they go through and they, they basically apply to Ken's Crew, and then Ken's Crews accepts them, they take them under them, give a job mentorship, and then get them a job. So we're, we're trying to get the right students into that program also, so.
I want to add one more thing, I'm sorry. Um, the last piece under here says they volunteer for community service. So we have actually been working with the senior center in Sayoville, and we team up with their, one of their, um, workers who is there, and they assign us a senior citizen, and we go and we help weed their yard, we have done grocery shopping for them, um, we have just done little, little pieces of things to make their life a little bit easier, uh, and our crew members are excited to do it. We, we were donate, somebody donated to us a bunch of gardening tools, and, um, we were able to use that to kind of teach them that it's important to give back to our community as well. So I forgot to add that.
This is just a, a general overview of what it looks like for our program, uh, and the trajectory of our program. Next year, our, our numbers, we're not gonna be expanding into a new location, we're not gonna be buying any new furniture, so generally, we're not getting a new van, so this number is projected to go up, our enrollment is projected to go up. So, it looks like that we are going to continue down that trajectory, and that's just a quick snippet of the legwork that goes behind this process of pulling all the numbers for our extensive report that is in your hands. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions or if there's anything...
Questions from the board?
One, the program that you're looking at with Raritan Valley College, that's fantastic and provides so much opportunity. Does that have a pathway to a certificate program or associate's degree program for the kids?
Yeah, it absolutely does. They have a process that they work through, that they take classes, and then they, it's almost like introductory classes that build up their social and academic skills to provide them the set skills necessary to enter actual classes that are credit, you know, credits towards an associate degree. And then they help track them towards it. They also give them the support necessary for academic, whether it's tutoring, one-on-one work, and additional services that will allow them to get that.
That's fantastic.
Anyone else?
Yes, since you're helping out the senior citizens, can you come to my house?
Sure will. Sign up.
As we're sitting here, I've got a notification that one of our seniors is calling me right now. She's a shop writer.
I just wanted to say that, listening to all three of you share about this program, you know, without a true heart and a vision, a project and a program will fail. Without people in it that really love the idea and the vision, and, you know, putting all the work that you're putting into it is the bulk of it. But how much you love these kids and how proud you are of them and the accomplishments and opening up these doors of opportunity for them, like you can't help but smile as you're sharing. So, it's coming off of you in waves, and I think that that is a large part of the success of this, is just how much of your heart that you're putting into it. So, it's really, it's awesome to see. Anyone else?
You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't make some comments. One of the qualities that I feel that I possess that is almost like a double-edged sword is I have a very strong imagination. And the negative to that is, when I imagine things, sometimes the reality doesn't meet my expectations. I'm sure you probably all have had that. This program, and I tell them every time I go over there, and I try to get over there as much as I can, because it is the happiest place in Sayerville. And if you think I'm fibbing, go there. And if you haven't gone there yet, what in the world are you waiting for? Get over there. But every time I go there, you always exceed my expectations. The first time David brought his vision to me about this program, I quickly began to imagine what it would be. And your team exceeded anything that I could imagine it would become. When we talked about opening the apparel store and the hub, again, my imagination was wild, and I walked in there last week, and you blew my mind. It was more than I imagined. It far exceeded my expectations, and that goes to the brilliance of you and everyone on your team. And I can't thank you enough for all that you've done, for every single student that's worked in this program or been educated in this program, for every single staff member that had the privilege of either going or being a part of the development of the program, and for the community, for having such a wonderful, beautiful, and you said it, Kaylee, loving place to go to and experience our beautiful kids. So, thank you, guys.
I do want to take one quick moment to thank you guys. We've toured about 15. How many schools have toured our program? Twenty-five, thirty? And everyone, when we talk to them, we always talk and we always have a conversation about them, because they always say, what do we need to get this program going? And we always say, you need a supportive superintendent and Board of Education. And they always are like, oh, jeez. And we're like, well, we are fortunate enough to thank the past and present members that get us to where we are, and that's how we've gotten to where we are. So, we thank you for your support and everything that you guys have done for us. So, thank you.
Great job. Can I just say one thing, Dr. Labby?
Yes, go ahead.
I remember when you took us over to see the space, and you were like, oh, and it's going to be this, and we're going to do this. You were like all excited, and I'm looking around going, what are we doing? Like, what is this going to be? And I really, I was, you know, pretty sure that you were going to accomplish your vision there, but I still was a little skeptical, and it really turned out to be great. And I did not know that you were the original thinker.
He is.
So, congratulations, Mr. Naster. You really have done an incredible job in giving all these kids such a big, you know, and everybody's saying, oh, the parents are saying, hey, wow, who would have imagined my kid would be working? Wow, my kid going to college. How about the child feeling, wow, I can't believe I'm doing this? So, I think that's one of the biggest wows. So, thank you so much, all of you.
You're welcome. So, Mrs. Grossman, I apologize, because this is going to be a terribly hard act to follow.
Right, right.
But if there's anyone that can make this into a robust presentation, it is you. So, Ms. Grossman is now going to provide a riveting presentation on curriculum and instruction.
Absolutely. It's just amazing. So much heart is going to go into this, but it's okay. I would like, it is the happiest place in Sayerville, though, and I do adore Bombers Cafe, and a lot of their stuff is simulcasted, so I get to watch. Like, I watched her sing, and I was crying at home, so it was great. So, it is a great place. But I want to start by recognizing my team members, because I know that there are some new board members that, I say names often, and I want you to be able to put faces with them. The curriculum and instruction budget is a collaborative effort. I work with Audrey Burns, and we sit down and we start to build it, and then we work with the content area supervisors who spend weeks researching, thinking about where their vision is for their departments, working with sales representatives, talking to their teachers, and then they develop their own department budgets, which then all kind of feed into this. So, I'm going to recognize, and that's why I stood up, so that I could actually see them over everybody. So, I'm going to ask you guys to stand up for me and just give a wave. So, Mr. Chris Howard is our supervisor of social studies and the arts, right, the fine and performing arts, K through 12. We have Ms. Carolyn O'Connor, who is our supervisor for science, practical arts, and our nursing program. We have Ms. Suzanne Capraro, who is our, I'm going to stumble on this one, really, world language, language arts in ESL. Used to be my position. We have Mrs. Pamela Schleck, who is our elementary supervisor for language arts and social studies and the humanities, and she also works with our media specialists. And we have Mr. Daniel Toy, who is our elementary supervisor, K through 5, for math, science, and our gifted and talented program. We have some others who couldn't be here with us this evening, but I wanted to acknowledge how much they put into this as well. All right, we ready, guys? We got this, we're good. So, during the 24-25, it says looking back, but we're kind of still there right now, right? So, we had a $1.2 million budget for curriculum and instruction. And when you think about a school system, it's the nuts and bolts of what we do, right? It's what we use to teach the children, the resources that we give them, the materials that we give them, and how we support our teachers in meeting those goals. So, during 24-25, our budget items were to expand our Hegarty phonics awareness to grade 2. So, when we took a look at our language arts program a couple of years ago, when we decided that we wanted to balance our program a little bit more and bring in phonics and phonemic awareness, we brought in Hegarty. And that's what Mr. Naster was referring to about our general education reading program. And then if the students aren't able to make advances with that, we look at alternate programs. But in 24-25, we expanded to grade 2. We also brought in some resources called My Reading Academy, My Math Academy, to advance their reading and mathematics skills at a differentiated level, online tool at, we brought it up to grade 3. We had been using it in grades K through 2. We adopted a new language arts series, Study Sync by McGraw-Hill. We had piloted the year before. It was a large, the response was so positive, but it is a large purchase, which is why our budget is always a little bit high. But we brought that in for our 9 through 12, and then we were able to use some of that funding to pilot it in our 6 through 8 grade. That is a comprehensive language arts program that addresses vocabulary, reading, writing, informational text, literary text. We created a district writing assessment program. One of the things that we were noticing, a lot of the prepared assessment materials that we were using in district, link it, form testing, some other things, they really lacked the independent writing, cold writing on the spot, you know, preparing them for things that they face with high-stakes testing with the state. So, we developed ours, right? Mrs. Capraro worked with our former elementary, and then we partnered with Rutgers, and we developed an assessment tool that we used budgetary funds for this year to develop materials, but also to pay some stipends for teachers to grade. So, our students back in September, early October, in grades 4 through 10, completed an assessment that we developed that gave us much-needed data to support the students moving towards state testing. We also brought in several new classes at the high school this year, American Sign Language 2, which was the second year of implementation of partnering with an online virtual teacher so that we could expand our world language offerings. We brought in a freshman foundations course, the vision of Mr. Gluhusky at the high school. It looks at social emotional learning. It looks at study skills. It is a mandated elective, half-year elective that freshmen come in. So, if you were at the freshman tip-off, you probably heard a little bit about freshman foundations. We brought in a film studies class. We had kids that were interested in looking at film as a medium and analyzing how they're developed, but also the impact that they have on society. And we developed an elective for our history program called History of New Jersey. We partnered with the special ed department to look at some interventional math programs, and we were actually able to identify some Tier 2 math intervention tools, Success Maker and Momentum, which is an assessment piece for our ASI. Tier 2 is when we identify students that need support in a content area, in this case, mathematics, and we need to provide them with a little bit of support outside the classroom. Maybe it's an academy, maybe it's work with an academic support instructor. So, we were able to use some funds to bring in Success Maker for our students in grades 4 through 8. And our Momentum Math Screener, we're kind of ahead of the game with the state, Mr. Toy, that's going to be with our K through 5 students. And that's when we want to identify what gaps there are for mathematics for students. We're going to be using that to better identify what we can do with explicit instruction for those students. We also revised over 37 curriculum guides in district. That was a huge undertaking. So, there were things that it was the natural cycle that we needed to kind of look at. We like, we look at guides every four to five years in the state of New Jersey, but we also had the launch of new standards. We had foundational literacy standards, foundational mathematics standards. So, when the state decides that districts, local educational agencies need to do something, we have to revise. So, 37 curriculum projects. We also took the pre-K, used as something called Tools of the Mind, but we wanted to make sure that it was up to Sayerville standards. So, we took that and developed a Sayerville pre-K curriculum. I don't know if I'm too close, I apologize. We also developed and implemented a grant-funded climate change program at Sayerville Middle School this year. That is, I'll give a little bit of an update with student achievement, but we are also going to be expanding that to UES as well. In addition to resources and curriculum materials, we also provide opportunities for our staff and for our students so that we can focus our instruction and focus the way that we interact with our students to best meet their needs. For our students, Mr. Naster mentioned, we provided extended school year for students in grades pre-K through 12, partnering with Camp Excel. We had learning acceleration for students in grades K through 5. We had a middle school credit recovery summer program. It's a six-week program for students that struggle to meet the standards that are grade level in science, mathematics, and language arts. We had an AP boot camp, and all of that was funded through some federal grant money in addition to local funding. We expanded our dual enrollment course offerings. We more than doubled what we were offering so that we are closer to our goal of providing students at the high school the opportunity to earn their associate's degree, general liberal arts degree through Middlesex College. We enhanced our music program through purchasing a lot of new instruments and really kind of giving the music teachers what they wanted to be able to have the talent that our students have really shine through. We locally funded extracurricular activities related to multiple content areas, DECA, FBLA, Odyssey of the Mind, academies at the high school for academic interventions, Technology Student Association, and many more. All of these rely on local funding. We expanded our learning academies. We've always had them in grades K, well, grades 3 through 8 for NJGPA, but also Literacy and Math Academy, K through 8. And we were able to count on you, and we thank you very much for local funding. We provided that for our 9, 10, and 11th grade students at the high school to support students that were struggling in demonstrating their abilities appropriately on the NJSLA and the NJGPA. We also worked with the Climate Change Awareness Program through a DOE grant, and we provided professional development, and we provided collaboration opportunities for the staff members who developed a program that partnered with the community where the students are going to benefit from experiential learning. They are going on various field trips to very high science areas that are landfill, water treatment, places that you don't want to spend a lot of time smelling, but the kids are going to learn a lot about what we do for our community.
It's all in the agenda.
That's it. For our staff, we continue to use local and federal grant money to provide shelter instruction, observational protocol training so that our gen ed students could support our multilingual learners. And we also provided consistent targeted professional development through partnerships with For the Love of Literacy and New Jersey Teacher to Teacher. So, we thank you for all that you did for the students this year, and we look ahead to what we're asking for next year. Okay. So, we want to increase the opportunities for students and staff. Obviously, we want to maintain the wonderful programs that we have in district, but we also want to expand to American Sign Language 3. We have a group of students that are excelling in American Sign Language 2 and really embracing the opportunity, so we'd like to add a third year for that language sequence. We are also going to be asking for funding for biological life sciences and Algebra 2 data sciences. Both of those will be new courses at the high school for next year. We would like to continue to work with the Professional Development Director and the District Instructional Coach to provide support and training for our staff in meeting the ever-changing needs of our students. We are going to be restructuring our media communications department at the high school. We're going to be restructuring the TV 1, TV 2, kind of realigning the courses, because the student request and the need to bring in something that was a little bit more creative in its writing relating to media arts. We're going to be bringing in a filmmaking course. We are asking for local funding for interventional tutorials in K through 12, as well as some Tier 3 tutoring as needed to supplement what we do receive in federal grant money. We are looking to continue to provide virtual on-demand tutoring for students in grades K through 12. We had the opportunity to use the High Impact Tutoring Grant Money in the past. Unfortunately, that grant is no longer available to us, but we had such a successful partnership with Pear Deck, where our students, whether they want to excel their skills, whether they want to revisit a topic that they learned in school, whether they want help with a writing assignment, they are able to log on, demand a tutor online session, and get support that they need outside of the classroom. We are also looking for local funding to fund competitive co-curricular teams, activities, transportations for field trips. All of these things are wonderful things that the board provides for our students each year. In the world of curriculum and instructional tools, as I mentioned, we were piloting the Study Sync by McGraw-Hill series in grades 6 through 8. We had one teacher in each grade level that was working, and it was so well-received and such a successful project that we would like to bring that in and provide that as a comprehensive core language arts program for all of our middle school students. We would like to expand the use of Hegarty in grades K through 2 by purchasing some decodable libraries, if you've tuned into any of the Science of Reading information that's out there about developing a well-balanced literacy program. One of the first things that they say is, kids need decodables that align with the Hegarty phonics and phonemic awareness, so that is also included in our budget requests. We are looking to expand our Climate Change Awareness Program at UES. That's going to be something that we're funding through the New Jersey Department of Education, but we're able to do that because we're asking for some local funds to continue the 6 through 8 program that we have right now. We are looking for continued resources. It wasn't something that we budgeted for this year because we found it mid-year, but we were able to bring that program in on a second half of the year usage, and we are looking to bring in the Math Resource Intervention Programs, grades K through, I'm sorry, 4 through 8, Success Maker, and that's going to enhance the Envision Program. Envision is great, but it's literacy-heavy, and it tends to be conceptual in mathematics. So, Success Maker is a component made by the same publisher that is going to allow us to... to give some explicit skill practice with our students, and it focuses on prerequisite algebra skills, which is something that we've identified through data analysis as being beneficial for our students. We are looking to adopt and implement the math screener, as I mentioned, Momentum for K through five, to better identify students needing assistance in mathematics. We are looking to expand our Sayerville Writing Assessment Program to include grade three. Mrs. Schleck partnered with some of the principals this year, kind of seeing what that would look like, an on-demand writing assessment for third graders, and she has developed a really great path to be able to do that. So we're looking to expand that Sayerville Writing Assessment Program to include those elementary students. We are looking for the adoption of tools for literacy in the elementary grades, such as Readers' and Writers' Notebook, published by Heinemann, and that, again, will round out our use of Fontis and Penel classroom structures in addition to bringing in the other elements to balance our literacy program. We're looking for some new textbooks for marketing and chemistry that are a little bit long in the tooth, I'm going to say, so that we can update the information that we're bringing to the students. And we are looking to continue the revision of existing curriculum guides and the development of new guides as needed. I know that far too often it kind of breaks down to the numbers. So the financial comparison, the 2024-25 current appropriations for curriculum and instruction, 1.2 and change, and our proposed budget is at 1.182 right now, and it actually is showing a little bit of a drop, which is nice. Why, Mrs. Grossman, are you asking for less money? Well, when we brought in things like Study Sync, it was four grade levels, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and middle school, it's only six through eight, and some of the other things don't have to be repurchased every year, so a little bit of a dip, which is nice. In addition to the new programs, the local funding will continue to allow us to buy things like classroom instructional supplies, journals, whiteboards, anchor chart paper, things that are specific to lessons and to activities that are being done in the class that are curricular-based, not just general supplies that all of the buildings are given. Consumables for some of our current programs, some of our series involve workbooks and, you know, student manuals and things like that that we constantly have to replace. We are looking to purchase some English novels and supplemental texts in grades six through twelve because when we realigned the curriculum and we brought in Study Sync, it was a great time to kind of refresh the books that we're reading with the kids. It also allows us to fund things like mathematics manipulative, science lab materials, materials for our foods classes, auto, woodshop. We offer an amazing arts program, practical and fine and performing arts at the high school, not while districts have those programs. So we're very grateful for the board funding that allows us to continue to offer the students those opportunities. We also purchase annual licensing for some of our online programs, things like Envision, Study Sync, Spanish, History, and some online tools, ST Math, My Reading, My Math, Achieve 3000, Sidest, Beluga, Discovery Ed. A lot of times you hear these things coming up when we look at curriculum guides and student achievement, and just the normal replacement of textbooks due to attrition for subjects and increases in enrollment. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the thoroughly engaging program on curriculum.
That was amazing. All caps, riveting and robust. Questions, board members?
A couple. I'll let you sit down first, Ms. Grossman. So let me go back in your presentation here. There was a lot. I love the focus we're putting on phonics and writing and everything from an early age that kind of just goes without saying. Freshman Foundations, fantastic new addition to the curriculum in the high school.
I'm so glad to hear that.
Oh, because...
Mr. Howard, did you hear that?
It is, because kid, the transition from eighth grade to freshman year of high school is dramatic, to say the least.
Absolutely.
And the study skills, the social skills, everything kind of needs to adapt to high school, and I think it's a fantastic program to have there.
And one of the things that it afforded the opportunity to do is because ninety-nine percent of our freshmen take the course, right? There is a little bit of a repeat with ROTC, so some of the students are in ROTC instead of that. But we, the course also partners with the counseling department. It partners with the vice principals. It partners with our, our, oh, crisis counselor, what is she? SAC, thank you, with the SAC counselors. They go in, they do lessons, they have conversations, they get, they develop relationships with the freshmen from day one.
Yeah, so it kind of teaches the kids how to navigate through any challenges in high school.
Yes.
I love that we have a real language arts series in high school now, and it's going to be fantastic that you, they will have the same, that it's the same program, then they'll have six through twelve.
Yes.
So they'll kind of learn it in sixth grade and then be very familiar with it, like the process of it.
The platform and things like that, absolutely. And it is a comprehensive series that does look at grammar and vocabulary and reading and variety of genres, and it has instructional writing units, not just writing as an output. So we looked at several series, so we're really excited about it.
One other question, because this one's near and dear to my heart because this is what I've been doing for the past thirty-plus years of my life. With the fantastic new Bon Jovi facility and studio that we have over the high school, have we thought about adding any music industry or recording arts or anything like that to...
So we actually have music technology as a course existing. I had the pleasure of observing it, which was really cool. So the kids are working with state-of-the-art equipment in, you know, writing their own music and creating their own compositions, which is just, it was mind-blowing to see what these kids are able to do. I was there when they were using technology to, you know, enhance sounds with different things. They want to add a little bit of lightness, they do this. It was, it was great. I'm not going to pretend that I have Mr. Sanford's vocabulary with that. There are, the budget does include some funding to help those music programs grow into what we've started with JBJ as well.
Great.
And if I can add to that, the budget also includes a stipend for a person to go ahead and help our own students produce music after school. So we do have a stipend in there that this person would facilitate students that want to go ahead and produce music to do so in the studio.
And just, I'm sorry.
But that's awesome, and the one place we may want to look and explore, because I know we're big on partnerships with colleges and universities, Monmouth University has a fantastic music industry. They actually have an on-campus record label that they produce down there, so it might be something that we could look at for partnerships or for suggestions.
We'll definitely explore that, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The wonderful thing is we have a lot of passion at the high school for it.
Yeah.
You know, between school leadership, Mr. Howard's leadership within the department, the teachers, they, that, the little E-wing or whatever it is over to that side there, that little music wing is really, it's special.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Palatano?
I'm going to try to talk about COVID. So going back to the freshman foundations, my child did the first semester of it.
Mm-hmm.
She, you know, she just finished, I guess it was Friday.
Yes.
And, you know, she said it was interesting, it was, you know, she never had a complaint about it, the teacher was great, she said it was fun, it was just, it was different. So she was kind of sad that it was ending because then the whole schedule was changing, but it made a difference, like she, she came back like explaining some things to me. I'm like, oh.
I'm so glad.
I don't want to talk too much on my call because I'm feeling good.
No, I'm so glad.
It was an interesting course.
The development of the course really addressed 21st century skills and what the state now calls life literacies and communication, and they are reading The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, and they're looking at different ways of communicating within the class, and it really, and this was just the first year, so it's amazing.
And you know, for parent conferences, she's like, you don't need to, you don't need to talk to that teacher. I'm like, yeah, I do, because it's a new class.
Yeah.
And, you know, he said it, it was new, it was different, and the kids really engaged with him. I don't know if it's the same teacher for all of them, but the one that she had was great.
Yeah, we have multiple teachers that are working on it, but, you know, we really kind of identified teachers that were going to take it and run with it, and they worked collaboratively on the curriculum, so.
Mr. Gonzalez, I think she had, is he a sociology teacher?
Yes.
It's all, that's who she had.
Good.
It was good.
Wonderful, that's great feedback. Anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, Mrs. Grossman, I had a question regarding the virtual on-demand tutoring.
Mm-hmm.
So I know you mentioned Pair Deck is no longer being used?
No, Pair Deck is currently being used.
Still based, okay.
Yeah.
And it's for six through eight?
Six through twelve.
Six through twelve, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And they, all students can go into their Clever account if they log in with their school account, and they all know what Clever is. They click on Clever in all of the online logins, that's how they get in. They click on that Pair Deck, formerly known as TutorMe.
I have a question with the, one of the new expense requests was for co-curricular teams. Can you have some co-ed teams? What are some examples of those, the competitive co-ed teams?
So we have DECA, we have FBLA, we have Science Olympiad is on the agenda for this evening. We have a technology students that's going to be participating in some competitive arenas.
Odyssey of the Mind.
Odyssey of the Mind.
The academic team.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, and HOSA, the Health Occupation Student Association.
I'm getting the nod, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is it?
Is the other one?
They're all called CTSOs.
CTSOs.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Former.
If you're viewing at home, that was Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard, former advisor of several of those opportunities.
Thanks for another acronym, Mr. Howard.
Anyone else? As always, Ms. Grossman, you leave me some...
Phenomenal job, great job, Ms. Grossman.
Not any, not as exciting as Bombers and Beyond, but it's okay, I'll take second.
Mrs. Bloom, that concludes our presentations for the evening.
Okay. And so now we move on to board discussions. Governance, who wants to take that since Mr. Fernandez is not here?
Mr. Glock-Mooy.
Certainly can. So Governance Committee met back on January twenty-eighth. We had a number of items on the agenda, including the district calendars for revisions to 24-25, 25-26, and I believe the first time around for 26-27. We also had the Transportation Mechanic Job Description, which is on the approval tonight. We went through a number of policies and regulations. Those are all on tonight's agenda. The vast majority of those updates were clerical in nature. They were to update in alignment with 18A or with other documents that have come out from the Department of Education. There are also some changes in there, for example, the high school graduation, which was just eliminating language from the COVID era, which simply isn't applicable anymore. So the vast majority of those changes all had to do with updates from varying regulations, policies, and procedures. Just looking over our summary right now, there was no substantial changes to any of those, with the one exception being 55-16 electronic communications. It was not previously a regulation for this one, only a policy. The regulation didn't change anything from what we are doing. It's in preparation for possible changes at the state level as to the use of cellular devices in schools. There may be pending legislation there. So the regulation's maintaining our current procedures, it's just putting it in regulation, preparing for possible future changes. We discussed that in our next Governance Committee, we have another round of updates to policies and regulations, and then we went over some legislation updates for a potential future mandatory preschool education bill, and then for a law for freedom to read act that Governor Murphy had signed into legislation. And that was it for Governance Committee.
Any questions for Mr. Glock-Mooy? No? Okay. Student achievement, Mr. Callahan, you're good?
Hello, everyone, yes. So Student Achievement met last Tuesday. During the meeting, we reviewed the new calendars. So we got three calendars that are on the agenda, the current year, 2024 to 2025. Next year, and actually, I can't believe it, the 2026 to 2027 calendar is on the agenda for this evening as well. And then, as Ms. Grossman has said, we discussed ten curriculum guides that are on the agenda. Is that part of your thirty-seven, or is that in addition to the thirty-seven?
Uh, that's included.
Yeah, so those are all on the agenda for tonight to be approved. Additionally, Ms. Grossman proposed awarding varsity letters to the cadets in the JROTC program, which is fantastic, that's at the high school, and she reviewed the new student clubs. So there's the Science Olympiad Club, the Hispanos Unidos, and the Sayerville Jewish Student Society. And then she also, this great program we have called the By Literacy Endorsement on diplomas, there was twenty-one seniors and seventeen juniors that are going to be eligible to get that seal on their diploma, which is fantastic. And then Ms. Burt, she gave us some updates on the grants, the High Impact Tutoring Grant, which is going away this year, the climate change, which I know Ms. Grossman brought up during, all those wonderful things going on with climate change that we're doing across the district, as well as the professional development efforts that's always ongoing with the Sayerville University Workshops and whatnot. And I think that was about it. So, and then we'll have our next meeting next month. Sound good?
Seeing none. Okay, thank you. Okay, Middlesex County School Board Association update. Our next meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, February the sixth. It is a virtual meeting, it will start at 6:45. You should already have gotten the invitation to register for that meeting. And then moving on to March, the Unsung Heroes Dinner will be on March twenty-sixth, and due to extenuating circumstances, we will be holding it once again at Obridge High School. So if you are interested, Dr. Labby, once he gets that information, will share that with the board. I believe we're inviting two board members, president and/or anyone else who wants to attend, plus the superintendent, but that will all come out when you get that invitation. And then Dr. Labby will let us know who the students are, and that is like one of the best county nights of the year, so.
I want to go to a party.
I'm sorry?
I want to go to a party.
Well, unfortunately, because the Superintendent's Association funds it, we can't invite the entire board. We would love to, but it just can't happen. So we will see, though, how it goes. That's it for me. Okay. At this time, we will open for public on agenda items only. Anyone in the public for agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, we will close public. And Dr. Labby?
All right, if I can bring your attention to finance and infrastructure, let's start with number one. We're asking you to accept a Computer Science Society grant in the amount of $700. Number two, which you can find on page two, number one you could also find on page two. We're asking you to approve a contract with McCabe Environmental Services related to asbestos abatement monitoring for the HVAC projects at the Jesse Solover School. Number thirteen, which you can find in the addendum, we're asking you to approve a contract with Mobile Ed Productions, this is pretty cool, to present the Earth Dome Student Assembly on February twenty-fourth at the Sayerville Middle School in the amount of $1,495 to be paid for using the aforementioned climate change grant referenced in Ms. Grossman's presentation. And then finally, on the addendum, numbers fourteen and fifteen, we're asking to approve more equipment for our kitchens, particularly at the Samson Upper Elementary School, and that's provided by MAP Restaurant Supplies. First one's in total amount of $16,304, as well as a Megatop Sandwich Salad Preparation Refrigerator for the middle school, again, supplied by MAP Restaurant Supplies, and that's in the amount of $4,923. As you remember from our food services presentation, at the beginning of January, we have a surplus that we have to continue to spend down, and Mr. Sittadino and Ms. Hill working really well collaboratively in doing that. Any questions on any of those items or anything else on finance and infrastructure? All right, seeing none, let's move over to student achievement. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize to the board, but let you know that we are withdrawing number one, which you can find on page seven, that is the long-term suspension of a student. So once again, we are withdrawing number one on student achievement. That's on page seven. As referenced by Mr. Callahan, we're asking you to approve, I believe, ten curriculum guides. You can find that all on page seven. Number three, which you can find on page seven and eight, again, referenced by Mr. Callahan, we're asking you to approve those extracurricular activities, the Science Olympiad, Hispano Unidos, and the Jewish Student Society at Sayerville Warmerwell High School. And we can't thank Ms. Fick, Ms. Corrales, and Ms. White enough for volunteering to be the respective advisors for each one of those clubs. Any questions on student achievement? All right, let's move to governance, as Mr. Glock-Mooy made reference to. We are asking you to approve several revised policies and regulations for first reading. We'll ask you again... We'll ask you again to approve them for a second reading on February 18th, but you can find that on number two, page nine. Numbers three through five, which you can find on page 10, as again referenced by Mr. Glock-Malloy, we're asking you first and foremost to approve a revision to the 2024-2025 school district calendar, basically because we need to move our staff development day. As everyone knows, several years ago, we started, we created, in, with collaboration with the SEA, we created a, actually a fourth professional development day during election day, the June election day. We did not want people from the public coming into our schools to vote while our students were there. So, we created another professional development day so that the elections could be held in our schools and our students wouldn't be there. We were recently informed that the election date, which was previously June 3rd, had been changed to June 10th. I believe it conflicted with a particular holiday, so a couple, beginning of this month, the state informed us that that date was moving from June 3rd to June 10th. So, therefore, we are now asking you to approve that change on our school district calendar. Students will not have school now on June 10th while our whole staff participates in professional development. We're also asking you to approve the 2025-2026 calendar revision. Essentially, what we're doing with that is we're combining days in the last week of March. We had two days at the, at the final days of March, well, we're just taking that whole week and making it our spring break, as opposed to the previous calendar in which we started the last two days of March of our spring break, and then we ended spring break on a Wednesday. So, rather than end spring break on a Wednesday, we're going to start the spring break earlier so we have a full, complete week of spring break for our students. That was the revision on the 2025, 25-26 calendar. And then finally, as Mr. Callahan referenced, believe it or not, we're asking you to approve the 2026-2027 calendar. Number six and seven, which you can find on page 10 and 11, this is really important. You may or may not know that every year, we actually sign a memorandum of agreement with local, county, and state law enforcement. It's a set of rules that we all follow when we're handling various matters. We're all on the same page, it's something that began quite some time ago, and it's been really effective in ensuring the public school districts are on the same page as law enforcement. Along with that, we're kind of ahead of the curve on this. Mr. Sprague and Mr. Glock-Malloy, in their brilliance, again, if you know anything about the two of them, we are doing things well ahead of other districts. In fact, this last part, number 07, is where, in which we're asking, we're asking to approve a law enforcement unit as an addendum to the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement. Not only were other districts not doing this, we've been doing it for several years, and that's a credit to Mr. Sprague and Mr. Glock-Malloy, but they're actually going to be doing a workshop so other districts can learn how they're doing what we're doing with regard to this. And they were asked to do this workshop by the Middlesex County Prosecutor. So, that's quite the compliment to both Mr. Glock-Malloy and Mr. Sprague for their ahead-of-the-curve thinking when it comes to keeping our students and our staff safe while also following the memorandum of agreement with law enforcement. And then finally, as, again, Mr. Glock-Malloy referenced earlier, we're asking you to approve a revision to the transportation mechanic job description. Any questions on governance? And Mr. Smith, there are no retirements, so I know you're upset, we'll provide counseling after the meeting for you. Number seven and eight on personnel, which you can find on pages 13 and 14 in the addendum, as always, we're asking you to approve the hiring of new certificated and non-certificated staff for this school year. Likewise, numbers nine and 10, which you can find on pages 14 and 15, we're asking you to approve the transfer of certificated and non-certificated staff for the school year. And it's an annual thing that I do, but I think it's really important to recognize this next individual, Victor Nakowitz, who is a custodian, he's the lead custodian at the high school. This is, today, his 48th anniversary in the district, so...
Victor deserves to retire.
We commend Victor. I don't think Victor's wife will allow him to retire yet.
You know what, God bless him if he wants to keep going.
I'm fine with that because I adore Victor, and again, 48 years...
Wow.
...with an organization speaks volumes about the person and the commitment and dedication to you. That concludes my report, Mrs. Bloom.
All right, any questions for Dr. Labby on anything? No? Okay, now we will move to public.
No, we need a motion.
I'm sorry, we need a motion, we need to vote on... See?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Chris.
Okay. All righty, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
I'm going to vote yes to everything but I insist on the three, no disrespect to my fellow board members, but I've been on this board for five years, and this is my second term, and I've never been asked if I was interested in attending the New Jersey School Board Women's Association Youth Conference. I certainly wasn't asked for this one, so I would like, in the future, that because there are multiple female... Oh, you don't have to say that again?
No, you don't have to, I just...
All right, if I have to, I will. But anyway, I don't think that, you know, with four women being on the board, it should be given an oppo, we all should have the opportunity to attend.
So that...
So, I don't know what the criteria was because it was never addressed to me.
The invitation comes out from New Jersey School Board Association, and they contacted us to ask to be approved for that individually.
So, they contacted individual board members directly?
No. Everyone got an invitation in your email. It was sent from the New Jersey School Boards, and you were asked to register.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
Okay. And then, we can't do it unless Erin approves it, so it has to be put on the agenda.
Well, I'm still going to vote no, even though I didn't say...
Okay. But next year, I'll give you a heads up in case you missed it again.
Well, you should, well, actually...
Well, everybody gets the email, so I can't reiterate every email that you get from school boards because you know we get like six a day.
No, but since this is really your baby, you could ask me about it, but that's okay.
Oh, well, I apologize.
Yes to everything else.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
I have to abstain on six, but yes to everything else.
Is this correct, a Monday board meeting?
Probably not.
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead, turn on your mic.
Just because I'm looking at the last page, is that correct, a meeting is Monday, March 3rd, on a Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Why is that?
Okay.
I'm sorry, why? Is it because there's something on Tuesday?
It's, to be honest, it's because I can't be here on Tuesday.
Got it.
I got to put it in the sound, I have the one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now we will open to public for any items at all. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? Please remember that you have three minutes. Anyone from Sayerville who would like to speak? Please approach the microphone first. Anyone who is not a Sayerville resident?
Good evening, hi, my name's Kim Lovely, I'm from Alabama, I'm a former special education teacher, I'm a parent, and I want to have somebody on a cafe, coffee break now, how about that? Sorry, can't wait to go. I feel very, very heartwarming to hear, and I'm sure the children are enjoying, so I just have a few things to say this evening. Dear Sayerville Board of Education, thank you for your time and effort for the academics and safety of students of Sayerville School District. This evening, I would like to be pleased to be sending you a policy 5756. Again, I would like to remind the board, your policy 5756 does not mainly, but it's just a policy. This policy begins to empower the child in making critical decisions without any parental guidance. It does not unite the community or the teacher, parent, child, instead it divides these five relationships. Teachers and parents are the most important people in a child's life. They play a huge role in the fundamental development of a child. Parents are legally responsible for children from birth to 18 years old. The child is dependent upon the parent for food, shelter, clothing, medical, and education. Why would policy 5756 allow a child to make complex decisions without parental consent? Schools require parental consent for most school activities, but does not when a child learns to identify as someone else than who they were born with. Why wouldn't a parent be notified? Why would a school enable a child to make such life-changing decisions without the ability to understand the ramifications of their decisions? Last Board of Education meeting, one of your staff members reviewed stats concerning absenteeism. His comment to decrease in some absenteeism was due to part of parental involvement. This is a real-life example of when teachers and parents work together to benefit a student. When a teacher and a parent work together, positive results connect. A recent article, "The Long-Term Impact of Parental Violence, Academic Success, and Beyond," is based on findings of how important this relationship is. Teachers and parents are instrumental in the development of a child. These are numerous benefits from successful relationships formed. Lower high school prejudice, improved focus during lessons, more student participation, and more homework completions, to name a few. A child's emotional development, as well as his more positive outcomes, a solid teacher-parent relationship. When families are involved, the student has more competent choices, better peer group having better coping skills when dealing with social circumstances, and more likely to have more empathy towards others is some of the positive benefits. Since these are numerous studies, and teachers are encouraged to have clear communication lines with parents, trust, which is key to this relationship, is broken with a policy 5756. Once again, the child makes decisions of when to tell the parent, and the social worker can stand and please other parents if they are not in agreement. A separate file is kept from their file, a separate file is kept from them, which a parent does not get to see. The student has to live two different worlds, one in school and the other with their parents. For the most important, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public. And we now need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Aye.
Our next meeting is February 18th, and I want to thank the board for giving everybody off on the 17th because it's my birthday.
Happy birthday to you.